Double session, maybe not double session in the beginning? I know, good. We'll pass around that. So we will jump right into our presentation for strategic planning. I've forgotten your name, so unfortunately.
Joe Miller.
Joe Miller, thank you.
Do you have a preference of where I operate from? Do you guys prefer?
I'm guessing he's gonna want you to have a mic, but you could probably carry it around if you wanna walk around.
Just don't talk with your hands. How'd you do on that? Okay, sorry. Thank you for having me back tonight. I spoke to Bob a couple of weeks ago and he said, invited me back, actually for February 2nd, and I apologize I couldn't make that night, actually had a, I think a school district meeting that night that I had to attend in Lyme where I live. And he said he had a few questions and to help frame that question, I thought I'd run through some of the things I talked about last time. I had some technical difficulties last time which made me maybe pivot and move through the presentation maybe quicker than I should have. And so this time I played no technology, just frame the conversation, let you guys get your questions out there, because I'm sure that nobody wants to stay all night and listen to me talk. So, I did bring some packets. I don't know, I probably have enough for, I know I have enough for everybody at the table, I don't think I have enough for everybody in the crowd, but I will have some extras. So I just wanna start with talking about process in particular. I know I talked about this last time, but this will help frame the conversation and help you guys with questions. Throughout the framing and the process conversation, I'll show you some examples, and those are included in the packets. They're examples of what other districts or other customers, clients that I work with have done in that process. And we'll say right off the bat that while I have a process and there's a general strategy or tactic I take, everybody customizes this, you know? It's largely dependent on the amount of time you wanna take, the type of group you wanna put together to do the strategic planning, and which areas are really big focus for you, particularly when you wanna get additional stakeholders involved. Some people wanna have additional stakeholders involved throughout, some people don't, some groups don't wanna have additional stakeholders involved except at the very end or certain points along the way. Those decisions really impact how long it takes and what your strategic planning process looks like. If you have questions about those things as we get to this, like if I tell you, you know, SAU 60 did this, North Country did this, go ahead, just stop me and say, "I'd like to better understand what you mean by that," because I may assume some things that are not fair to assume. Okay, so first let's start with the actual process. And really, you begin in a stage that I tend to refer to as like a readiness stage, and that doesn't take very long. It's simply me getting on the same page with whoever's gonna be your primary liaison, whoever your primary contact is for this. So we get on the same page, we do a data inventory, we talk about the things I'm going to need to make this happen, we lay out a calendar, what your limitations are, how many meetings you expect to have, how quickly you think it can happen. That doesn't typically take very long, it typically takes a meeting, and then from there, I start to build pretty quickly in the things that I need to do. So I start working right away, even before the first meeting I had with a strategic planning team. In general, we work with teams, most groups work with teams less than 15. If you get bigger than 15, and even 15 tends to be a pretty big group, if you get bigger than 15, with the primary group, you tend to run into problems. And I don't know if you guys have heard this term before, but I love it. There was a, I can't remember where the study was done, but they did this study on optimal group sizes, and you've heard this, okay, social loafing. If you get too many folks in groups, you start to lose the inputs from folks, because they start to feel like they're on the outside and they do a little less work. And so if you do have big groups, you have to find ways to make them smaller throughout to not lose their input and the diversity of the people you have in the room. During that time, one of the important things that I do is I put together a data profile for the group. And that can range from a variety of things, but the reason I do that, and the reason I think it's important is because you can't make decisions about what's strategically important to an organization without looking at data. We all have biases, we all think we know everything that's important, but it's really key that you have some additional data that you bring to the table. We're not always surprised by the data, but sometimes we are. And among the things that we do, and I'll key you in now, oh, the other thing I did was take the timeline that was in my, so this first page about the process, this was in the proposal I provided to you, second page was also in the proposal, but it had specific months in it, and I just took those off and said, you know, if you're gonna run about an eight-month, nine-month process, this is what would happen during that time. And so, the page after that is what you see is a table of contents. And the table of contents is a data profile that was put together for another SAU that I did strategic planning with. For those of you in the crowd that can't see it, it looks like this. It's two pages. You can see his, great, yeah. For everybody else that can't see it. It just lists the type of data that we brought to bear in that particular conversation. And for the most part, this particular SAU, they stayed really, really insular in a way. They wanted to really have just the board having these conversations, and so they really needed, the big challenge for them was how were they gonna access stakeholders and information from stakeholders early on if they weren't gonna be out? Because eventually, they did get out, this particular board did get out, but early on, they didn't want to. They wanted to stay real tight with their conversations, and they came in with a lot of biases and things that they thought were important in this situation. And the way that we kinda broke through with this was something that I recommend everybody do, which is a survey. And they did both a staff survey and a student survey. And what really broke through for them was how different what the staff said was important to what students said was important and what was going on, and they really got keyed in on, especially some of what the students commented on as key in the district. And that was, and surveys, look, I understand they have their issues, they tend to be really inexpensive and efficient and a great way to get back a lot of data, but it should never be the only data you depend on, and that's why we look at a diverse range of things. On the page, so I put in like three pages of this particular SAU, and it was full, SAU 60, and you can see what three pages of that profile looks like. I don't remember how long exactly it was, maybe 20 or 30 pages long total. And the page after that is, looks like this, for those of you back here. This is the data that come back from a survey that is a custom survey that I've designed, and you can customize it, but it's a survey I've designed with all the work I've done over the years with school districts on things that are key during strategic planning. And one of the things that I learned was, we did a, I did a survey when I was working in SAU 39, which is Amherst-Mont Vernon, and they really wanted to have this like really positive look at their district, because they were relatively high performing, and so, but they still felt like they could move it further. And they wanted to understand what people thought were both their positives and also places they could move further. So we did an open-ended survey, basically all the questions were open response, and we had, it was over 200 parents responded to it, but here was the killer, we had 2,000 students respond to it. So like all this data, like hand, you know, like it got printed out at one point, not by me, but like by the district, because they wanted to hand it out to some of their board. It was like this thick, so all this data had to be coded at some point, and in the end, because I okayed this, I had to basically do this pro bono. It took me over 40 hours to hand code the data from that. And so that was a huge lesson learned, that there's patterns and there's things we understand about how people respond, and we don't have to do open-ended surveys to everything. We can do this, get lots of good information back that allows the people that are talking about your organization really useful, really useful information. And this is actually an online thing that I do, and you would be returned at a dynamic dashboard that would allow you to organize the data however you wanted. And this is an example of some survey data that I collected. So really key in this process is, early on, is getting information about your district. And so I put a big premium on that, because just the things I've learned is that it does open our eyes up, and you can't make strategic decisions without data, you just can't do it. Next, in the process, what we do is, early on, I like to take a look at mission and vision, and values have become far more important to me too, in just the last few years I've learned that I think that's a really key conversation that we need to have is, and in many cases, school districts in particular have spent a lot of time on this in the past, and we don't have to belabor those, but we always take a look at it, and usually do a little bit of updating. What I've included in your packet here is really actually an exercise, so throughout this process, what I have is a book, more or less, of exercises that I've created to facilitate the strategic planning process, and you'll see this one's called Creating a Vision Statement. It's among the many processes I use around visioning. And this one actually just shows you what the writing looks like at the end. But at the end of the day, it describes what a vision is, it shows you some examples, and then it shows you what it looks like to create a vision statement. Those of you in the back, it looks like this, not very interesting, hard to read from there, right? But here's what, here's why these things are key, is because, as I said last time I was here, what you're trying to do when you're creating a strategic plan is you're trying to name that vision. Where do you wanna be? And what these data are telling you, and all the data you're collecting is, where are we today relative to what we need to be? So if we don't, if we just check off our vision and we spend zero time thinking about it, then we miss that opportunity to really name where it is that we wanna go as an organization, what we wanna be, what is that aspiration we hold for this organization. And so that's actually a really key part, and I, and we do tend to like feel like we've done it over and over again, and that's fine. We can look at it, we can move on, if we feel like it's aspirational and it's something we can name and move to, let's do it. But on the next page after that, you can see just a process that I use with folks, these, in the case of Regional Services and Educational, oh, no, I forgot their whole name, RSEC. Anyway, in their case, they came up with a whole bunch of vision statements, and then they went through a process where they then took this back to their staff. They have three schools or three programs, one of them's a nursery school. They took it back to their staff and talked to their staff about which visions made most sense for their organization. So it was one of the ways that they started to include stakeholders in the process. Okay, I'm gonna move you on in the process. Using these data, we talk about an organizational assessment, we really look at where we are relative to where we wanna be in the future. Once we've done that, and I use some pretty standard procedures for that, we use, we look at data, we talk about framing problems, we do a SWOT analysis, all these things that a lot of you guys have done before, we don't need to talk about in detail. But the first really important decision process that you have to make as a strategic planning team is identifying your strategic issues. And let me tell you about these again, because I know I talked about it last time, but think vision, up here, this is where you wanna be. Think here, this is what your data tells you you are today. What's our reality today, this is the vision of where we wanna be. Your strategic issues are the things that are gonna get in the way of you getting from where you are today to where you're gonna be in the future. And this is really key in the strategic planning process, is to name those. And what I found is that, in this process, we'll name a whole bunch of things. When I started in SAU 39, I don't remember the exact number, but it was like 63. The truth of the matter is, you can only handle about five or seven issues, strategic issues. These are big things that you should be talking about at the level of the board on a regular basis. Not, do we need to replace the roof of the building? That's not strategic, that's critical and operational. Strategic issues are, how are we gonna maintain the high-quality education given the declining enrollment in our school district, if that's an issue for you? I assume it is, most places in New Hampshire, not everywhere, but most places. Those are the type of strategic issues that you're trying to name. If you flip to the next page, I've created a, I've just, I've given you a list of them from other clients that I've worked with. I'll read a couple of these off, since you guys know the way you can read those, right? I'll read a couple of these off. Key in this process is, I use, I prefer, and you'll see that not all of these ended up this way, I prefer that folks use a framing question of, "How might we?" And the "How might we?" questions are specifically designed to make us ask a question and not come up with an immediate answer. So we're, in other words, we're saying, we're identifying the issue, we don't have all the answers, but one, it's an issue that doesn't have a clear answer, and we can solve it. So by saying "how might we?", we're saying, we don't know what the answer is yet, but we think we can take responsibility for it and solve it. And that's really key in this process. We can't see everything as external and not out of our control. If we do that in strategic planning, you're gonna end up really unhappy and disappointed with your plan. And by framing it as a question, it saves you. So I had a client who said, "We weren't bringing in to do strategic planning, because we need a plan for how we can get foreign language K through 12." My response to that was like, you don't need a strategic planner for that, because you're already responding to a problem. You've identified what the problem is, and you've decided what the solution is. So don't come in with a solution looking for a problem. Make sure that you're identifying your problems, and then trying to find solutions to those. And that can be really tricky, the same group said that they were trying to implement full-day kindergarten, and they said, you know, "We need to do foreign language in full-day kindergarten, and we need to write a strategic plan to do that." You don't need a strategic plan for that, right? You need a project plan and an outreach to your voters plan to make that happen. You need a strategic plan to answer a question that is a strategic issue for them. It turns out, their big issue was that they had a lot of parents that were unhappy and leaving the district for private schools, because they didn't think that the district provided a well-rounded, you know, 21st century education. Well, that was their real problem, how could they solve that problem? They ended up coming with lots of other approaches to that. And that's really key, and it can be a somewhat disciplined, it can become an issue actually, as it turns out, because in the case of SAU 39, they ended up with nine strategic, nine, I think, nine, or five, sorry, or seven, sorry, seven strategic issues, but one of their strategic issues was really fiercely debated among the board. They have a 17-member board, and really fiercely debated among that board of whether they should have it or not, and they ultimately agreed to it, even though there were several people that were opposed to having that issue. And that was really important to me as a facilitator, because at some point, you have to feel like some folks aren't getting their issues on the table. Because as a board, you cannot do everything. You can't be strategic if you're focused on everything. You have to make choices about what are the most important things for you to focus on over the next five years. And so there has to be a little bit of feeling like we're not making things neely-mouthed enough, you know, or smoothing the edges so much that we're doing everything. We really are making choices about what's strategically important. If you flip the page to the next page, there's a page that looks like this. See that? Like this, for those of you. Once you've identified what your strategic issues are, your job then is to come up with strategies to address them. And what happens is, the first thing you do is you take your strategic issue and you turn it into a goal. In other words, what would it look like in the future if we were able to address this issue? And in this case, I'm sharing with you, SAU 60, 60, I think? Is that who it is? SAU 60s, yeah, and they, and they spent a lot of time on these, thinking about these strategic issues and really coping with these strategic issues, and then really very little time thinking about their goals. So if the goal's not perfect, you know, that's okay, don't worry about the goal. What's key about what they did that was really cool was they took their strategic issues and they said, "We don't know the right answer to these questions." And so they, this forum, we created this forum, and then they went out and held forums at all their schools with the teachers and parents, and in some cases, students as well. And they said, "These are the issues we have. What do you guys think we should do?" And so they took like, for example, one of theirs was, "How might we prepare students for college or career?" That's one of their questions, their goal was, "Prepare students that are academically and socially able to actively transition to career or college." And what you see, for folks in the room, what you see here is that they've created this bridge. They've said, "If we're gonna get from strategic issue to goal, we need to know what happens in between." And I will tell you that the number-one challenge in strategic planning is not getting your strategic issues. Yes, deliberation, agreement, sometimes is hard. The number-one challenge is where do our ideas for strategies come from? Because we only know what we know, right? We know what we've experienced. And so finding ways to bring new ideas to the table, because if we're just gonna do the same stuff we've always done, or think about the problems the same way we've always thought about the problems, then you probably don't need strategic planning. So there's the real challenge, is like, how do we challenge ourselves to think in new ways about these problems we've identified? And for them, their way was to go out to, was to go out and meet with teachers and parents to a lesser degree, and students to a lesser degree as well. I always encourage boards, and this, a lot of folks joke with me that I'm a paid advertisement for the National School Board Association, and I'm not. But I did go to their meeting one time, when it happened to be in the city that I lived in, and it was an excellent conference. It's probably one of the best conferences I've ever been to. I wasn't a school board member at the time. And so if you ever get the chance to go as a school board, if you guys have money in your budget for professional development for the school board, it is an excellent meeting, and it's a great way to get new ideas about how other people are solving similar problems, because they're all trying to solve similar problems to us. Last year it was in Boston, I don't know where it is this coming up year, but it's in March, March I believe. So I sound like a paid spokesman, oh my God. It's just gotten to that point, really. So you're trying to come up with strategies, and if you flip the next page, this page looks like this. This is something new that we're trying, this is again at SAU 60, one of the things they did, SAU 60 was, that they went through this process, they met with parents, they met with teachers, they met with students, they came back, they created a draft plan, and then they realized that they weren't super happy with it. They were like, "Oh, we need to spend more time talking about strategies." So they got to this point where they had 61, I think 61 strategies in the strategic plan. It's like, "Look, folks, you guys aren't gonna be able to do, like all these things." They had like, whatever it was, five goals and 61 strategies, and strategies are sort of still even pretty big ideas about what you're gonna do. And so what they're gonna do is they're gonna do these things called idea rating sheets with, hopefully with a public meeting. I'm still negotiating with them on how exactly they're gonna do it. But they're taking these, and I've done this before with smaller groups, I think the people, it was about 25 people, and took all their strategies and put them on these idea rating sheets. And then what it allows you to do is explain what your goal is, and then hang these idea rating sheets up, or put them on a table, and allows people to come by and say, "Here's what we think about that idea," in a really simple way of saying, you know, like, "Here's what my thought is, here's where I rate it, and here's my comments about how you could make it better." And so it creates this opportunity to collect a ton of feedback. And I did it last summer, I guess it was June, seems so recent, but it was in June with a group of about 25 folks, and it was just wildly successful, because it allowed you to collect a lot of feedback really quickly, and see both where you could improve ideas that already seemed pretty good, and also where you could clean off things. And by the way, I know as a board, what you're thinking about a lot of times is, "How do we get stakeholders involved? How do we get feedback?" This is a really great way to get feedback on frankly, a lot of things. I think the idea is really cool. And it's not my, it wasn't my idea, I took it from somebody else and adapted it as, and you can see the websites listed on there of who I adapted it from. And it works really well, and it's one of the ways they're going. So you're constantly thinking about how you can get people involved. So what's the output look like? I included just a plan that I did semi-recently, it says 2015, but I think it was actually 2016 when we finished this plan, for North Country Education Services. And what I wanna point out is a couple of things. One, that these things aren't 50-page documents, these are guiding documents about strategy. This is, what are your goals, what are the big ideas? These communicate as, you can communicate as a board with each other, with your leadership team. You can also use these to guide your conversations. SAU 39 built a plan very similar, it was a little bit longer, probably twice as long. Their principals actually submit their principal reports to the board around the goals and strategies in the strategic plan. So it says, "Here's what we've done recently on this strategic issue." They open every board meeting with a conversation about the, I don't, actually, I don't know if they open it, but in every board meeting, they have a conversation about the strategic plan. And they did something really cool, they created subgroups around their five big themes, and those subgroups were the ones that came up with the strategies in the plan. And then they stayed together after the plan was adopted, and they meet and talk about the goals and strategies and how they're gonna be implemented. Their subgroups include board members, members of the staff, and members of the public. They range from four or five people to up to maybe 10 to 15 people in the largest group of their subgroups. And then those subgroups come back, and the chair of that subgroup reports to the board about what kind of progress they're making. So that's one example, and then the next example is from another, and I only put one page in there, and I'll tell you why I put one page in there in a second. One is it's a working draft, and so I can't really share the whole plan with you, but this is a slightly different approach, where they have a goal, they have a set of strategies, and then they've started to include outcomes, because they wanna be able to say, "This is how we would know if we were being successful with these strategies." Not just whether we're checking off a box that says "We did X, Y, and Z," but what would our outcomes look like? And just for those of you in the crowd, like, their goal was, "Attract, promote, and retain top educators and leaders." They saw as one of their core goals that they had to have. And then their measurable outcomes were increasing, they tend to have low applicants for a lot of their jobs, increase in applicants for all positions, and then they're gonna survey their educators about feeling valued, because feeling valued is really core to keeping people there. And then reporting that they have access to professional development, because they believe professional development is key also to keeping people there and increasing the performance of the educators they have. And so they, what they did was, they started creating outcomes that would allow them to monitor their plan along the way. If you flip to the very last page, I think this is the last page. This is the same organization, and what they've done is they've started to take out, and these are just called, there's just simple roadmaps. They've started to take out their strategies out of their strategic plan, and they've started to map them out. And it turns out, this organization in particular, one of the core problems they have as a team that they're trying to figure out, and you would see it in the strategic plan if you had the whole plan, but one of the core problems they have is sort of following through. They make decisions, but they wanna make sure that things were hitting the ground, and so they're starting to roadmap out their strategies. And you can see, this is a rough version that they've just started built at the end of January. And there's other ways that you can timeline as well. I've worked with groups where they just timeline the entire goal or strategy, you know, expecting to do this by, you know, fall of 2018, we expect to be able to do this. Okay, sorry, it was longer than I thought it would take. And I speak so fast, it's like my dad said to me one time, he's like, you know, he couldn't hear either. He came to see me give a talk one time, and he said, "I don't have any idea what you're talking about." I think he forgot to like turn and put the battery in his hearing aid. He's like, "I have no idea what you're talking about, but my one comment would be that you talk too fast." Not that it mattered to him, so. Okay.
Does anyone have any questions? So what would be, the first step would be, have a launch meeting and start deciding what we'd want for a group and stuff like that?
Yep, yep, we'd look right away at like timeline, 'cause, you know, Because, you know, and I remember last time I was here, I think somebody asked about, you know, who would be involved and how you get those people involved. And so it's really a lot of times those operational details that make a big difference in how you can hold meetings. I've worked with a board that only wanted to hold meetings like on Wednesdays once a month for like an hour and a half. It took forever, you know, to do that. And so you have to like, you know, there's some, I can give you guidance, but a lot of it comes down to things that you guys can handle. You know, like, who's going to be involved? How often can you get them involved? How quickly do you want it done? Things like that. So making those operational decisions will really impact. And that happens in the very first meeting.
So how big of a, there's a core group that will kind of drives the whole process from beginning to end? How, what is the optimal size of that group?
The, so there's two answers to that. The optimal size is really probably about seven people. However, that's optimal from a like, do you want to turn out stuff, you know? Versus, one of the issues we're always dealing with is how do we make sure that we have the right stakeholders at the table and we're hearing the right things? And so that really comes down to like, what's important to you guys, you know? Is there, are there certain groups of people that, you know, need to be involved? That can increase the group sizes. You know, less than 15 is pretty important, because there's other ways that you can expand your stakeholder feedback. You know, so there's other times along the way where you can make the group really big and get a lot more feedback. But getting over 15 with a core group gets complicated, because you do get a little social loafing. And then people may not show up all the time, and then you're kind of starting at ground zero again. So that can make things tricky.
Okay, that sounds good. Anyone else? Do we want to just schedule a time and get started? Or have a discussion about what we see for the group? I mean, I'm picturing the entire board being on the group and then having, you know, maybe a member of the administration, a member from the budget committee, teacher, para, maybe a student from Co Brown would be awesome, I think, something like that. And someone, you know, parent from the community perhaps, or two, or someone else from the community. I don't know. I don't know how to.
I certainly would encourage you on your, the very first, like, so assigning the task of being the primary liaison with me, the very first meeting would be a much even smaller group.
Maybe just the board and when we decide on things like that.
Yeah, maybe even smaller than that, because it's really operational. It's really like, what can we, you know, what can we do? What can we need? And that could be, I could have literally like a short phone call with Bob and say, here's all the things we need to work out. And then I can come to the board, and we can have that list of, you know, what dates work, and you could have talked a little bit about that ahead of time.
So what's the next step right now? Do we just have to schedule a meeting?
Yep. Schedule a meeting, yep.
One of those?
Yep. And then we can, I mean, my preference would be, we schedule a meeting so that we can lay out a calendar, we can get a timeline going. And I can get all those other meetings on my schedule. We can start to screen and get folks involved that are going to be making commitments.
So I think it might be worth having a discussion with the board on that now that we've gotten this feedback, and then maybe at our next meeting, put that on our agenda as to what the board would like to see out of this. And then we can figure out if there should be someone to represent for this first meeting, or if we're all going to do it or whatnot, but.
Okay.
So I mean, that'd be two or three weeks from now.
Okay. In the meantime, I mean, if you guys have questions, like, call me or, you know, send me an email, you know, if there's something where, because certainly you're going to walk away here and you can be like, wait, I would need a bit more clarification on that. So feel free to call me or email.
Just to drive, if we're going to have a full, you know, discussion about this at our next meeting, what decisions would we like to see out of that? Like, you know, scheduling the meeting?
Yep.
Some ideas to what we want our group to be?
Yep.
Anything else? I mean.
When you want it done is pretty key.
Okay.
So is this something where you want to meet over the summer and work on it? Or is this something where you only meet during the school year? What kind of time you guys want to commit to individual meetings? Do you want to go with, you know, half-day meetings, two-hour meetings, full day a couple of times? You know, what kinds of things work for you guys as a board? Those are super helpful to me, because then I can give back to you a much better plan on this is how, this is what I think will happen in these meetings. And my advice always is like, try as hard as you can not to do short two-hour meetings or one-and-a-half-hour meetings. And I know that's tough, because you guys meet a lot. Okay, I didn't live in New Hampshire until six and a half years ago. And when I moved to New Hampshire, I was like, oh, my gosh, these board members. You guys do a lot of meeting. And so I know it's hard for you to imagine, you know, committing a lot of time, but I also want to, I want to discourage you from taking that route, because it gets expensive for you too. Like, it gets to this point where you're having a facilitator drive and come to meetings, and you're restarting at each meeting. You know, you're restarting the conversation and re-getting your head around things each meeting. And that causes you cost. Really, at the end of the day, it slows you down and drives up the cost. And so I strongly discourage those ideas. And I know it works for you, but it still is tough.
Do you ever do any of the facilitating or anything? I don't know another word, but we use VTEL at work or anything like that.
So like, online stuff?
Yeah.
Yeah, so when I was, when I was working in SAU 39, they did those. So I just semi-described this. We did this, it was actually kind of cool. Once they had their five, sorry, seven strategic issues under five themes, they actually held a half-day Saturday meeting where they brought in speakers, because they were in the same boat. They were like, how do we get new ideas? You know, so they brought in speakers to talk about these things. So they had like a former student, they had somebody from Dine come and talk, they had a realtor, they had all these people come in and talk. And then they created these subgroups. And then for those subgroups, they each had facilitators. And then I held meetings for them, for the facilitators, online using any meeting. And it can work for specific tasks. It can work really great, actually, where you have small groups of folks, yep, jumping online and doing that. Big groups, it gets hard. And I apologize if you like to talk with my hands, which doesn't translate well over any meeting.
Anyone have any other questions? So as is, what I think we'll do then is we will meet ourselves in two weeks, and we'll try to come up with some of these ideas. We expect our timeline to be, our groups.
Yep, and I can send something back to Bob to you, saying like, here's the question that I think you guys really need to answer at that meeting.
Yep, and then I imagine at that point, we'll schedule, we'll get in touch with you and schedule the kickoff meeting and.
Great.
In the meantime, we can get a contract drawn up and some of the expectations with that, and I can bring that to the next meeting.
We'll skip that part.
I shouldn't have mentioned that pro bono.
We liked that.
Exactly. I felt like I was the one that said it was okay, so I had to do it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we'll go back to our traditional opening public comment. Does anyone would like to speak today? No one, everybody's quiet today. Very well. Anyone from the board like to address? Any members like to address the board at this time?
I would. I would just like to say thank you to Ginger for her clarifications in the sun. And I'd just like to make a clarification. I did look up what the safety pin means, and it does not just mean that it's against the administration. It is also that you are for, you're supporting minorities anywhere. So I just wanted to make that point, that it's not just that you're against the administration.
Okay, thanks. Anyone else? Going, going, gone. We'll be moving on to school board business. We'll start off with the approval of minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes from, sorry.
February 2nd.
Thank you, February 2nd.
Any comment on these or corrections?
Yes. Line 307. Correct me if I'm wrong, Jocelyn, please, but I'd just like it noted that Ms. Young did state that the doors were unlocked, because it was about five minutes prior to dismissal time of the students. Was that correct?
That is correct.
Anything else? Seeing none, we'll move to vote. All in favor to approve the minutes as amended?
Aye.
Aye. I oppose. None, all abstained. We do also have some non-public minutes.
On public minutes from the second.
Second.
Any discussion on these? All in favor? Let's see from that as well. Okay. Smajri.
Hi. So my report begins on page 14. And in there, you know, we start with the revenue statement, and I've indicated that the catastrophic aid we did receive, and we fell slightly short of what was estimated. We are short $4,400. The Medicaid rates have been approved, so we should start seeing more money coming in for the Medicaid reimbursements, because you can see that that's pretty low right now. Any questions on the revenues?
I do have just one question. Why does our grand total of our revenue not match the grand total of our expenses?
Say that again.
So the grand total, we have a, you know, 11, any line, right? They say adopt the adopted budget of $11,212,000, right? But our budget is $11,818,000. So where, I mean, where's that $600,000 coming from?
It was returned to the town. So that's what, otherwise you would see it in your district assessment. So your district assessment is lower because of that. I think that's how it works. I looked into it like right when we did the revenues, like four or five months ago. I try to make sure that everything's nice and neat and even, and I exclude all the numbers, so. But typically, that's what happens.
So the difference is?
The money that was returned back to the town in fiscal year 16. It comes off of the district assessment. Right.
Okay.
Like, at the end of the year, it's not like we physically send a check to the town for the unexpended funds.
We just ask for less.
Right. Correct.
Okay, I understand. Is there any way we could represent that in here? I mean, it'd be nice to have, you know, monthly records where they match.
Right. And I think I used to do that when I first started, but then it was confusing. And like, we've changed the financial statement so many times since I, depending on who's on the board and who's not, and who wants to see.
Who wants what, right.
Right, so, but I think with that, I think it ended up being more confusing only for the fact that it's never going to agree. Because I pretty much make sure that this statement, the adopted revenue statement, agrees to the DRA. You're not going to see that money on the DRA side for the revenue. You don't, does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I get what you're saying, at least. Okay, sorry. Go on.
That's okay. So are there any more? And I can, like, I mean, I give you guys all the DRA forms, so anytime you guys have more like questions when those forms are being done, if you want to come in or, you know, have like a work session or whatever, and I can explain those forms to you. And that's fine. No more questions on the revenue? So then on the expense side, you'll see that we added the anticipated column. And we, so typically, I meet monthly with the school administration, Bob, the accounting manager at the SAU as well, Ed, and anybody from special ed that can meet with us within their busy schedules. So at this point, we're starting to anticipate money that we can't technically encumber, like the substitute lines and stuff like that, or graduation expenses. We don't know what those are going to be. And anything that Jocelyn or Adrian think that they're going to spend before the end of the year that, you know, they're hounding people for purchase orders, that they know that should have come in at this point. So we will be slowly closing out purchase orders as we get to the end of the year. Like, I'll be focusing more on like the electricity and the fuel oil and seeing what we can close out, you know, so we get a better number towards the end of the year. Do you want me to go through the pages individually? See if there's any questions on page one?
I think if people have any questions, please just bring them up. I went through this earlier.
On page one, I have a question.
Okay.
Teacher salaries, the last, so this would be the third month of three, have jumped around. Can you tell me why? So two months ago, I forgot to look what it was last month, but it was quite a different. Two months ago, it was $68,000 remaining. And last month, it was less than this, and now it's 47. To the best of my knowledge, in that period, one teacher left and we hired another one. So I'm just kind of curious what the movement around is.
I mean, that's the only thing I can think of, is that if a teacher left, or a teach for whatever reason, and we hire a new person, I can reconcile that line more tighter and ask them. I know two months ago, it was probably because when the longevity was being paid out. We kind of don't encumber that, because we just kind of wait for November to come, and we just issue it in a check, depending on who's here and who's not, and who we have contracts for.
Okay, yeah, I would like to know if you could, what's the difference between two months ago, last month, and this month? And how that teacher and the new hire?
I can think of one teacher that left. I'm thinking, do we have any track changes, or are those all accounted for already?
Well, and that's the thing, like, all I can, in my head, all I can think about is Stratford, because I just prepared their financial statements for the packet for next week. And there were glaring like issues there, so we had. It's one of those things where like, we get a new hire, so I had to make sure that it was. So that's the only one I can think of. North, what I can't think of off the top of my head of what teachers have left, if any, and who have come in.
So I mean, I, I know that one teacher left, and we helped her out. The money that we helped was supposed to be around $19,000, as I recall. Is that in that line?
Has it been accounted for already?
It would come out of that line.
So if we helped her on insurance, would it come out of the insurance line or the teacher wages line?
Insurance would come out of the insurance line.
But her salary would have come out of?
Sure, yes. The salary would have.
Sick days, anything like that would have come out of there.
Yeah, I agree with that. I'm just trying to figure out, because I kind of kept track of the new teacher was making quite a bit less. So I expected that to go up, and instead it went down.
Okay.
And again, I'm going back two months, so this is.
But then that teacher, I'm not sure, like, are we still paying her?
There was.
There was a period, there was a period of time where there was an overlap there, too.
Right, that's what I'm wondering.
Yes, I would like some accounting of all of that.
They got a track on that one, too. They had to prove something, and then they would be on a different track.
You mean like a step and track?
Yeah.
And I don't remember pay as being part of the agreement we made. It was more benefits. You know, I don't remember pay as part of it. I remember the benefits, we were trying to help her, as we should.
I think if we get any deeper in this, we need to go into.
Exactly. I agree with that. That was the only question on the whole thing that I had. Wednesday, you got a date again for, you guys want all purchase orders to be?
April 1st.
April 1st. We're shooting for April 1st.
Which I believe is a Saturday, so we'll probably give them until Monday.
I don't know.
Maybe. Maybe. But just to remind people, I mean, we're looking at an anticipated balance of $184,000 there, but we've still got $3.9 million encumbered. And all of that obviously is not going to be, that's going to fluctuate some. I mean, we've got some open purchase overs, whether it's maintenance, or fuel oil, or electricity, or whatever, that obviously that's not going to be, hopefully, it's not going to be expended, all of that. So we're anticipating that that number is going to go up. But as we get to April 1st, we're hoping to get a much tighter number at an earlier time.
So I don't know if this is the time to bring it up or not, but it is about money, something that I've been thinking about. I was looking under the maintenance and ground maintenance, not just, there's about $24,000 left in there. And I know it's not April 1st yet or anything that's not anticipated or anything in there. I, like, as a board, for us to think about the water coolers, replacing the water coolers in this school, they're disgusting. I, they're just, they're disgusting. The bubblers, whatever you call it, the fountains, whatever you want to call them. The two out here, they're nasty. You know.
What does that mean, they're nasty? They're cleanable.
Yeah, but.
They're stainless steel.
But they're also, but there's also ones out there now that you can put, that kids can bring in their own water bottles and refill them and things like that.
I just saw those at Pembroke Academy. Those were nice.
You know, sanitary. Yeah, they have them at Oyster River. I was at Oyster River. You know, we always talk about schools being Petri dishes for kids being sick and everything.
I mean, I don't mind talking about having a water cooler. We have one down at Camp Yavna. It's kind of neat that you can fill a water bottle. But I, I mean, every one of our water coolers are very clean. But I, I mean, every one of our water coolers are very cleanable. I use them all the time. I don't find them nasty. I mean, I.
Water coolers or bubblers?
Bubblers. Whatever, the things on the wall.
Can we call them fountains? They're called bubblers. We're New Hampshire, they're bubblers.
I mean, I, I.
That's just a suggestion that I have, and maybe we don't need as many as we have here if we change to the ones that have the bottle, the, you know, the bottle fillers and stuff.
We just had this discussion a year ago, and did we replace?
We did replace a couple because.
I think one.
Yeah.
I think we only replaced one.
Well, whatever. But I mean, we did have one or two that weren't working and we replaced those.
I think that's because it was broken. I mean, it was.
Yeah. And I don't mind that, but I mean, everything on them are replaceable. And if it don't work, then we should fix it or replace it. But I'm just, I don't find them nasty. I use them all the time, you know?
But that's an example of why we're trying to tighten up the numbers by April 1st, so you can get a good number, so you can have some of these discussions, whether it's that or something else. And that's good, you know, as we.
The water pressure in these stinks, too.
Well, that's not a water cooler, though. That's water pressure. So that's a pressure switch, you know, wherever our water system is. I mean, and if we have money, that's fine. I don't mind looking at that kind of thing, you know? And if we need a new switch or we need it looked at, pressure switches are not real expensive. Our town administrator replaced one the day I think he came to work for us. Was that the day, Joe?
The first week, yeah.
First week, anyways. But that, those, those things are either adjustable or replaceable at little or no money to build up pressure if there's not enough pressure in the school.
It's just something that I'd like us to think about.
All right.
Maybe we can have the facilities committee look into them.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say.
And evaluate what, how it is, what can be done.
One in each hallway or something like that. I mean, it doesn't have to be all of them, but the ones that can fill the water bottles would be nice.
Any other questions for our business administrator?
If not, I actually have a question for you guys.
Go for it.
So Tim brought to my attention in this week's payroll that the board members did not receive their stipend this week. So I just wanted to ask you guys, because I do have the treasurer here, so is this something that you guys would like paid out tomorrow? Because I don't think for the most part that you guys have direct deposit, because other than that, I wouldn't need her to sign the checks. But I will need you guys to sign off on the payroll. Or do you want me to wait until the first payroll of March? I can do either. I'm asking you what your preference is right now, because I'm just going to have to jump the gun first thing in the morning, or send out an email tonight.
I don't care.
Okay.
I'm, I'm looking at them, but I'm not looking at mine.
Okay.
So for me, it doesn't matter whether it's this week or in two weeks.
Same here.
Okay. All right. I'll still send the email out tonight, but I just wanted to know if it had to. Okay. Thank you. Sorry about that.
Anything else? Oh, yeah, that, I only.
I was going to say.
Yes.
Oh, no. That's bad. I hate numbers.
So, while Ms. Whitmore is here, and we would like to let her go home, of course, we do, we do have further things on our agenda, one of which she may be useful for. So if the board does not mind perhaps moving this J2 forward to now, which is the transportation discussion, so that she can be a part of that, and then we can let her go. Is that okay with everybody?
I wouldn't mind staying for the policies either.
Well, then, never mind.
They had some hand in that, so in case there's any questions with that, so it's okay. I appreciate you guys wanting to let me go home early, but I don't mind.
All right.
It's okay. Thanks, Bob.
So much for that. Any other questions for, for her specifically? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to the principal's report, please.
Good evening. My report starts on page 30. I started out in the report just giving a summary of a staff meeting that we held at the end of January. You know, my goal as a school leader is that we have students who are high achieving and who love school. And having been here for a little over half a year at this point, I feel like that is absolutely possible. There is a ton of potential in this building. We have kids who are smart and funny and kind and thoughtful and super eager to learn. We have staff who are committed and willing to go above and beyond for our kids. And I think with some focus and some goals, that we will be able to achieve a lot here. So specifically, some things that we've seen either a good start of or kind of a fledgling start of that we want to expand and really kind of grow are three themes of inspiration, innovation, and inquiry. So we're going to start to sort of publicize those a little bit more. You'll see them on our letterhead. They're on the website, on the Twitter feed. I gave you a link, and I realize it's really hard to type all of those things in, but it does work. So at some point, if you want to check that out, that is just a prezi of what I presented to the staff that kind of gives some data about where we are compared to the state, where we want to go, what our commitments are as a school. So that's that. Any questions on that part?
So there is a thing called the URL shortener. We can put an URL, it'll give you like a, you know, 10-character link, that you could do that.
I will check that. I couldn't figure out how to, so prezi gives you a link to share, and I couldn't figure out how to translate it into something.
I can show you.
Thank you. The second item is in, Bree had specifically asked, I had mentioned this a couple weeks ago, that we were going to be doing some professional development around our RTI, Response to Instruction Block, which we now call WIN for what I need. We started with grade seven and eight. And Nancy Kavanaugh and Mary Ann Neisser, literacy consultant, did two separate sessions that really focused on creating structured and focused lesson plans for the four-day WIN block. So kids have WIN Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. So kind of took that week, that four-day succession, and broke it out into specific activities. The lesson plan template is included in here. It's based on close reading, which is kind of looking at a shorter passage and getting a really clear, deep understanding of that passage. But it, it can be modified to look, to analyze a math prompt, for example, or, you know, a science inquiry task or something like that. So it is modifiable. So we started that with seventh and eighth grade, and then we will figure out scheduling-wise how to get that to teachers in younger grades in the next month or two. We also started to do some staff-run professional development. So the building leadership team has been working hard on building their capacity and understanding around learning goals, for example. So at a recent staff meeting, they, the leadership team representatives broke up and took their grade level spans and presented the professional development to them. So it wasn't so much me presenting it or Nancy presenting it, but it was more from the staff, for the staff. And that was, I think, productive and well-received. And we'll continue to work in that model as much as possible. Any questions on that part? A gentleman named Richard Levergood, who some of you may know, he's a former board member and had two kids go through the school. He's a certified physics teacher in Londonderry and offered to do a really cool robotics after-school program here. So we're going to start that at the end of March for students in grades five through eight. We have room for about 10 students, so we'll have a little bit of an application process for them and then do kind of a lottery selection. So he came today and actually gave us a little demonstration of the robots and programming them, and it's super cool. And then the robots will be, belong to the school, so we'll be able to use them in future years. We'll use them in the summer program. So I think that'll be a lot of fun.
So is this, are we buying these things?
Yeah.
Where's?
We use REEP money, the Rural Education Achievement Program money.
And he's volunteering to do this?
Yes.
Okay. It's not a club or anything like that necessarily?
Yep. And Mr. Robert will help him out, and it's right up his, right in his wheelhouse. So he's excited to do that. And then an update on the summer program. It has been approved in entirety, which was exciting to me, because in my former district, I had to do about 17 revisions before I could get anything approved. So this was nice. So the requests to advertise have been sent to the SAU, and Linda Osborne is processing them, and we'll get postings up internally to start. And then if we don't get enough interest from existing staff, then we will post outside. We have been in contact with Dale Transportation, and we'll, are confident that we'll be able to get transportation arranged. And then I have a couple of things that are not in the written report. One thing that's come up particularly with the winter weather and the snow in the last couple of weeks is drop off in the morning and pickup in the afternoon. We've had some feedback from parents that they think that that could work better. So we have put some things in place. We now have, so for example, one of the issues in the morning is that our teachers who do the duty have to leave at 7:45 to go supervise kids in their classrooms. And so people who are in line at, say, 7:43, get up to the door at 7:45, the door is closed, and then the kids have to walk the whole length of the building back between the cars and the snowbanks unsupervised. So just this week, we started having one of those teachers, when they close the doors, walk outside the building. So she's kind of scooping up the kids who are still in the cars on the way down, making sure that she's escorting them, supervising them. We've already had some positive feedback from that, so I think that's helpful. One thing that will also really help is if we can get parents to drop off a little earlier. We do tend to have a really big rush right around 7:45. So just wanted to remind the general public that kids can be here as early as 7:25. And then for drop, for pickup at the end of the day, it was feeling a little chaotic and some frenzied. So we added some staff to that. And then I also want to put a plug in for our staff. We've had, so our staff alternate duty days, and we've had all four of the staff coming down every day. So I really want to commend our staff for, again, being willing to go above and beyond to keep kids safe, and that's been going much better. And then one very cool thing, and I brought a couple show-and-tell items. A motivational speaker named Ed Garrity came in yesterday and spoke to our sixth through eighth graders. It was very well received. His themes for the talk were respect for yourself and for others, compassion for others, and aspirations, and really encouraging our students to dream big. He donated a copy of his book for each and every one of our sixth through eighth grade students, teachers, and paraprofessionals. So I brought a couple copies if anybody wants to take a look at them. He, he had a good message. He used humor. He was very engaging for the kids. I had a group of eighth graders come up to me afterwards and thank me for arranging it. And then Adrian and I had a busy day, so we didn't get a chance to drop off the books until later in the day, and kids were hounding me all day long. When are we going to get our books? So that was great. So I really recommend him, and I'm hoping to get him back next year. And he also offered to like Skype in and do kind of just a quick check-in with our kids throughout the year. So he was great. And then my final thing, I just got hot off the presses today, a request from student council for some fundraising activities next week, so no pressure or anything. Do you mind taking one in passing? So they are interested in, A, having a little fun, and B, raising some money for a canvas. They want to create a mural for the school. So they're hoping to raise some money for, to purchase the canvas. And so they are looking to do two themed days on Monday next week, a mismatch day. And I'm assuming that means like plaid and stripes. I don't really know.
That gives you this already. Wear your pants backwards.
Yeah, something like that. For a dollar donation for each person who participates, that would be open to everybody K through eight. And then twin day on Tuesday, same thing. So I am looking for the board's approval of that.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion on those?
So, yes, I do. So it's a mural?
Yes.
Of what size?
I'm not sure.
One of the amounts of money that we have really not used very well over the last six years, maybe one year out of six did we use it, was the artist in residence. Is there any way to incorporate some artists to help and take the money out of the artist in residence budget?
Perhaps. We're currently in the process of selecting three artist in residence candidates right now, who all have different forms of media that they do. So depending on which one we go with, that we can certainly work that in.
I don't, I don't mind a thing. I just, I, I always think of Stratford, and they, they really have some nice displays of artists in residence things they've done over the years at Stratford that are quite nice. Thank you.
Any other discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. I think that's all I've got.
Okay. Thank you. Don't have any questions for our principal? Seeing none, we will move on to the enrollment report.
On page 35, 36, 37, you've got your enrollment report. Be happy to take any questions.
Is the enrollment report in here public knowledge?
Yep.
That's what I thought.
Do we have any, I'm just curious, with our kindergarten numbers, what they are, I mean, do we typically get more first graders than we get kindergartners coming in a year after? Because there, because kids don't have to come to kindergarten, right? Or is this, or is that number kind of stable?
I, I think typically you'll find two things. You'll, you'll find some that don't go to kindergarten that come in, and then you'll find some that are in a full-day program someplace else and then come into first grade. So typically, in every district, you, you see a couple more than, than kindergarten normally. It's, it's hard to get a real firm number on that.
Sure.
It's been two or three. Pretty steady, though.
Yeah, usually it's a couple more.
Weren't we down to like 378 at the beginning of the year? Now we're at 386.
I remember that we were at 380.
380?
Yeah. Was the first one that came out.
Anybody else have any questions on the enrollment report before we move on? Seeing none, we'll move on to policies. We have to, we have a nondiscrimination policy that came last, I think it had a second reading last meeting, I believe, Policy AC. So I believe it's up for, sorry, correct me if I'm wrong, it's up for?
Reaffirm.
Being reaffirmed tonight?
Yep. So moved.
I'll second that.
What was the?
Policy AC. We'll move to reaffirm it.
Can we just step back real quick? On the enrollments, I think I asked before, and I think it was, would be very easy to put on, whether your kids from Barrington, just to show how many kids from Barrington go to Co-Brown on the grand total from where Dave Smith puts his numbers for North of Donegan, Stratford, and any other towns that do come to, like Deerfield and Barrington, just to get a number of how many actually are going to Co-Brown from those towns.
I can find out if that's easy for him to do.
Back to the policy. Anyone have any comments on Policy AC? Seeing none, we'll move for a vote on it. All in favor of reaffirming Policy AC?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 401? Any abstaining? The policy is reaffirmed. Next up, we have a first reading of four policies. AC dash R, dash R, Policy F V, Policy G C C B C, and Policy G C F.
So moved.
I'll second that. Do you want to give us any overview of what the changes were or why? Or, I mean, are they just bringing them in line with the model policies, I assume?
Yep. That's what we're doing. We're bringing them in line with the model policies, all of them.
So, nothing too interesting. Does anybody have any comments on any of these policies? These are, these are its first reading, so we'll bring them back. If anyone has any comments, do it now, but we will review them at our next meeting as well. Seeing none, all in favor of bringing these back for a second reading next meeting?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstaining, no, five zero. That concludes our policies for today. Although, I would like to, while we're, while we're on policies, did you do Policy BA? I did not. I'm sorry.
No, that's not one that we're.
That's for later in the.
Okay, okay.
While we're on our policies here, do you know, are these, I like, I like seeing getting our policies up to date. Are we about there? I mean, is there much more to do?
That I don't know.
Okay.
I'd have to ask Scott.
I would like to get more active about creating policies for our district ourselves, so we can look at things from a more strategic point of view and as practice perhaps. I would like the, I would like to, we can ask the board. I would like the policy committee to see about putting together a policy for the Deerfield Fair Day, like what we should be doing on that day, which is what kind of a model policy for or anything like that, right? I think it was heard that the board right now was in favor of not having school on that day, not scheduling school on that day. That might be worth making a policy for. I don't know if the board does agree with me, that's fine. I just, it's something, I think we, we need to.
I think the hard part with that is that, you know, you're making the policy, but then, you know, parents change, kids change, they move on.
The policies change too. But it, but it, but it gives a roadmap to administrators and committees, you know, as to where they should be, so that they don't need to come up and have a meeting about it at the school board to get answers. Right, I mean, that's the, that's the purpose of policies, is to set, you know, how, how the school should operate outside of having to directly ask the school board every time. Right?
And I think that's, just goes back to the calendar committee, because it does change year to year, and I don't know, I don't, that's just my opinion. I don't think we need a policy on the fact that we're not going to have school on Deerfield Day, or we're going to have a half a day of school or something like that. I, that's, but if the board, you know, sends it back to the policy committee, we'll make one.
It's a suggestion. I think, I mean, having model policies is fine. It's great to have that stuff, but I think having our own custom policies.
But I think by making that policy, I think you're going against the teacher's contract also, because it says that those dates will be decided in the calendar committee.
Okay.
Yeah. Correct me if I'm wrong, Bob.
Yeah.
That's true.
The contracts state who's on the calendar committee, and then ultimately, the calendar committee is the one that puts that together and brings it back for approval from the board.
I was just trying to avoid where, the situation where it happened this year, where the calendar committee did bring back something, and then we kind of rejected it and told them to go do it again, which was, you know. Okay, well, if anyone has in mind any policies they'd like to get in there, I think, I think it'd be a useful thing for us to do as a group to, to start putting together our own policies.
I think that's a good idea. I just, I remember Mr. Rooney talking about, and, and I can't recall, to be honest with me, I'm sorry, whether it was a meeting at the school board or just a meeting that I was having with him over policies, but he seems to have a lot of experience with policies, and one of his biggest complaints is that some schools, including ours, has an overabundance of policies that don't really mean a whole lot.
Right.
And, and so, they're just a bunch of paper, and that's exactly my complaint with policies. We, we have an overabundance, and then we have quite a few that we don't follow, which irritates the heck out of me. So, I don't, you know, and I, I certainly have thought over the last couple of months of several policies I would like to see, so I'll try to put those in paper. But, you know, I think it's a good idea to solicit ideas from the board for policies, but I, I, I don't think it's a good idea to junk up our policy manual with a bunch of inane policies, and I don't mean that one particular is, but just policies that really only pertain to a, a very short space of time.
Well, and I think that was part of the reason that we sent our policy out to the school board administration or whatever it was, to have them sort of thin it down for us, and right now, we're.
I can't recall, though, we've only gotten rid of maybe one or two?
I don't remember how many we've gotten rid of, but, you know, one of the things that we're doing right now is the ones, we're going through the ones that we didn't have or the ones that we needed to update and things like that.
Yeah, I mean, I'd, I'd be very much in favor of eliminating some of them too, if it makes sense too.
Policies are like contracts, and, you know, contracts, they, they, you can tend to put a lot of junk in a contract that really doesn't belong there and just mess them up. And, and policy is the same thing. If it's not something that we're going to embrace and, and follow, then maybe it shouldn't be there in the first place.
Yeah, similar with like suggestions. There's a lot of policies, like, school board's in favor of this, or, which doesn't really say anything, right? It's just, it's, it should be actionable, I think, you know? Okay. Any other talk of policies that we policyed out today? Okay, we were policyed out today. We will move on to the superintendent's report.
All right. The, what I handed out was on House Bill 413, and Joe had called me and asked if he could have a moment and have the school board's time, and I touched base with Keith, so if it's okay, Joe, if you'd like to speak to this?
Just very quickly here. I'm coloring this. I colored one of your big pictures back there. So, yeah. At our last Board of Selectmen's meeting, I wrote up a letter that we're going to send to our representatives, asking them to support House Bill 413. This particular bill would reallocate funds to the New Hampshire retirement system for teachers, policemen, and fire department. If that passes, the town itself would see a savings of about $26,000 off the, off of our town tax bill. Marjorie did send me your numbers. I, I could imagine it would be far greater than just 26,000, because you guys, I mean, your, your budget is huge with staff, so. In front of you is a, a kind of a draft. Did you edit the draft, Bob?
No.
No, okay. So, in front of you is, is something I drafted up and just quickly handed off. I would appreciate the school board's support in signing this and asking our representatives to Northwood, up from Northwood to Concord to support this bill.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
If I have any comments on this?
I certainly don't have any pro or con comments. I just don't like to make that kind of a decision so quickly, so.
That's what I was going to say, is if we could.
I'm, I'm going to take it home. I'm going to look into it, and, and in the next day or so, if I want to sign it, I'll get it to Joe. But I, I just.
I want to read the bill. I want to see more about it.
What if we, what if we leave a copy at the S A U so that everybody can sign a single copy?
That's fine.
We actually have a joint board meeting on Monday, so. And we can take the weekend to look it up, and then we can pass this around on Monday.
I strongly men looking into the bill, because there's a lot that was going on with this at this time. This, when they were trying to approve this, it was because the retirement system was failing. It was failing hard, and they, so, that was one of the reasons why they put the burden back on the towns, because it was failing so hard. Just part of it. It wasn't the whole reason why. So, I'd definitely look into the bill and read it.
Yeah, and I mean, that really gets complicated as, as to why it was failing, because the economy was down and the, the, the money that was invested wasn't doing as well as it should have, and you could go on and on and on. There's just a lot more to this than this little statement, and I'm not trying to be derogatory. I just personally, before I signed something like that, would like to look into it a little more. So, how soon is Monday good?
When are we sending it out, Joe?
Whenever you guys are ready. It's a long process.
Yeah, there is, it, it, I think you shouldn't read, read HB 413, because a little bit of the past history of, of the retirement system is that the, the portion that's actually paying the retirement benefits right now is approximately one or 2% of what you're paying. The bulk of what you're paying right now comes back to the underperforming investments.
Yes, yes.
You know, ten, 12 years ago, that, that they're still trying to make up for that. And then, obviously, the, the state is trying to balance their budget, so this is just one way that they're downshifting the expense onto the local taxpayers.
And then, you know, if they pass it, where is that $41 million going to come from? You know, and, and, you know, there, there's that too. Is there a compromise? I don't know. So, I'd like to look at the bill. Has there, Joe, do you know, has there been any testimony on it yet?
They took, yeah, they took a vote the other, yesterday.
Budget?
Moved to the.
Committee?
Finance, Budget Committee.
Yeah, so the, the committee voted on it?
Yeah.
Okay, and what was their vote?
All right. I found the text of the bill, so I'll send a link to everybody too, so they can see an email.
And obviously, that's the discussion, because it has to, it has to come from somewhere. So, if, if they decide that, that it's going to come off the local taxpayers and onto the state budget, then the question is, all right, what else goes, or where does that money come from for the state budget? So.
Yeah, and I mean, there's a lot of, it's a dilemma. There's a lot of weight on the state budget right now, because everybody with the new governor wants their share of the pie, and I certainly, I think everybody agrees that more money has to go into D C Y F and, and some of those issues. So, I don't know. Anyway, it's good to look at it, so I will.
All right, thank you. The other thing, just an update, we, we've had some, as you know, some interesting weather the last two weeks. We've been monitoring snow loads and trying to back up the, the parking spaces and, and be safe with the kids being dropped off. A lot of dilemmas to, to look at when we're looking into that. We were fortunate enough today to get a delay instead of a cancellation, so that was, that was a, a little welcome piece. So, right now, we're sitting at, at five snow days. We're, we're fine so far. We could probably take one more or so, and then, you know, we're going to have to have some discussions about what we're going to do with our calendar, but to this point, I think we're, we're okay, and the sun's out, so.
Yeah, there's nothing through next Wednesday now.
Hopefully, we can keep it that way for a while. That'd be nice.
What about our roofs and stuff? How are they?
We, we've had, asked all the custodians to look at them. We've been monitoring them so far. They're okay. And, you know, if we were, if we were getting another one or two snowstorms with a foot, I'd, I'd be a little nervous, but it looks like we're going to have at least five days of hopefully some melting over the weekend and, and helping out there, so.
It's supposed to be pushing 50 the middle of next week.
Lots of water in Johnson's office.
That's right.
I'm tapping trees tomorrow.
We'll have another problem, so. But we're, we're hanging in there. And, and the custodial staff, you know, we've had some storms also with bad timing, and they've done a great job at getting it clear, getting it ready to go, which is not always the easiest task to do, so they've been doing a super job. And that's all I have.
Okay, anybody have any questions for the superintendent? Going, going, gone. We'll move on. We don't have a personnel, personnel report?
No.
No new business committees? Has there been any committee meetings since our last meeting? You know, Technology Committee was supposed to meet, but we got snowed out. No excuse. School was canceled. So, I believe the Education Committee is meeting next week for student discipline reasons. All right, no committees. All businesses, deliberative session review.
I just put that on there to see if there's anything that, any comments you had, any, any issues that came up. I thought, I thought it, preparation wise, I thought it went pretty well.
I agree, yeah.
But if there's anything that you have concerns about or, or changes you'd like to see, just while it's fresh in your mind, let me know, and, and we'll see, we'll make those adjustments.
I liked having, I liked all the information in the packet. I thought that was, that was good. I think, do we have enough packets for everybody? You printed, you had 150, right? There were leftovers, so, okay, that's good.
Correct me if I'm wrong, the town report books, they weren't at the deliberative session for the town. And, but years past, they were there, and then they were there for our, what's it called? To our.
Deliberative session.
Our deliberative session. I was wondering why the town report books weren't there, the annual town report books.
Until March.
Not till March?
Other type of meeting?
They used to have them, though.
When we had town meeting and school district meeting in March.
It's been two, they haven't been there?
It's too early.
Okay, all right. All right, just thinking about to pass us. I always thought I had one in my hand, but I guess not. Okay.
Speaking of that. Yeah. We can have a school district report included in the town report as well. It may, it may be too late this year, I'm not sure, but I'm not sure what the.
We've already submitted.
You did, okay, okay. Are you going to bring that to us?
You think about like a school board letter?
Maybe.
By the school board letter?
There's always a school board letter, if you do it.
I don't, I don't know if we were asked for one this year. If we were, we would have sent it.
I did get something, but I didn't.
Oh, okay.
I didn't have a chance to do anything with it, so I guess if anyone has any feedback for.
Okay, that's what I'm saying. If you want to.
I don't have any.
It's too late now.
It's too late now, all right.
Yeah, I think in the past, the board chair has.
I didn't have any idea, like, I, I was hoping to get some examples of what was done in previous years.
Okay.
Next year, I'll do that.
Did anybody get any feedback about the PowerPoint? Like, I thought myself, I could read it. I don't know if people from way back, because it was so far back. Anybody?
I never heard of it.
About that or anything? I know that the sound was off for a while, but we figured, we figured that out.
I never heard of anybody.
Were the slides hard to read? No? Okay, good. Then it was a success, then.
All right, moving on, we have a transportation discussion. If you'd like to lead that, I wasn't here for last week, so I'm not sure exactly what.
The discussion basically centers around a couple of things. You've got a, by the way, your contract is, you're down one bus. You have been since the beginning of the year, and normally, by the contract, it's, it's, you pay, Marjorie can probably explain it better than I do, pay a couple of months ahead. And so, we've got a credit payment now that's, that's two months ahead. So, we need to decide if we're going to be down for that bus for the remainder of the year, then the board can take the credit, so we're not carrying a credit late into the school year. And I believe the request from Northwood Transportation was for 85% credit for that bus. So, that's something that the board's going to have to decide how you want to do that.
So, really, I think there's two issues here, right? One is the amount of credit and how to return it. Do we want to just take it out of one payment or, or spread it out over four?
Right. You, you need to decide whether, whether you're going to do the 100% reimbursement or the 85%, and then separate from that, you need to decide, do you want that credit spread over the remainder of the checks for the year, or do you want that all in one check on the next payment?
So, I have a couple of things I'd like to say to it. Number one, we were led to believe that, we were told that Nottingham had a very similar issue, and that their bus company was asking for 75%.
That's correct.
Their bus company was only asking for 25%, not 75%.
The, the credit that they're getting is 75%?
No. I don't believe that's correct, and I checked before I came to the meeting tonight.
The school's getting a 75% credit?
Yes, the school is getting a 75% credit.
Right, that's what I.
Okay, so.
Saying the same thing.
So, our understanding was the bus company wanted 85%, and we would get a 15% credit in talking with Scott last week. Is that?
That's what Deb was asking for.
Yeah, and I don't know, yeah.
Okay, and then we were led to believe that that same, similar figure was in Nottingham, but it's the reverse.
Well, it is that you, you're not getting a 15% credit, you're getting an 85% credit.
Instead of 100% credit.
Yeah, but the way she was talking.
No, that's not, that's not what we were told last week.
Yeah, she, she was talking that she wanted to get 85% given to her, and the school.
That's exactly right. And we were led to believe that that was what was going on in Nottingham.
No. Nottingham is paying 25%.
That's correct.
She wants us to pay 85%.
And that's rather ridiculous.
That's nothing else.
And, and, because it doesn't make, because even if she, why would she go 85? So she was saying that truthfully, because why, why would she take fifteen over twenty-five? If it was the way Nottingham was doing it, so, I think she really wants eighty-five percent, and there's no way in heck that I would give her eighty-five percent.
But we're giving her a twenty-five percent.
Right, but right now, we're taking a hundred percent for one bus of a credit off of her invoices.
Right.
So she wants eighty-five percent of that back.
Her letter, and I didn't catch it, and, and Scott even said, he was very surprised that I didn't catch it, but when I read it, she was asking for her to get eighty-five percent and we to get a credit of fifteen percent.
Can I just read from the minutes from last, last meeting? She's, she asked that the elim, that the eliminated route price be adjusted from forty-two-thousand-three-forty-eight to thirty-five-thousand-nine-nine-five to help offset her fixed operating costs and to keep her new bus replacement plan on schedule.
Which is eighty-five percent.
Which is eighty-five percent, right, so...
And my answer to that is no way, no how. I'll do the fifteen, but, and help her, because she does have some fixed costs, and I, and I feel bad about that.
I would even do the seventy-five, twenty-five.
You know what? It might be easier, 'cause, to just go with the numbers, right? 'Cause this percentage thing, I think, is confusing people.
Can you tell me what line you're on, Keith?
I'm on line fifty-five of the minutes.
But we're starting from now. We're not going back, and, because if we've been taking a hundred percent of a credit for the whole time, we're talking about starting from now. We're not talking about paying her for...
Retroactively.
Right.
Well, I think she's talking about it retro, that's retroactive, that thirty-five...
That's not how, that's not how it comes across in the minutes, but I wasn't here, so...
But my, my, she does have fixed costs. She has the extra bus, she has, she has some expenses, and, um, she is our bus company, so we, we have to have some heart. Um, I, I don't have eighty-five percent heart, though, I'm, I'm just saying, I, I don't.
Yeah, I, I think she's, I think she's asking for fifteen percent, by my reading of it, but, like I said, I wasn't...
Well, I, I...
No, the letter definitely asked for eighty-five.
No, we, you know, and I, and I'm willing to give her fifteen percent.
As am I.
So, if you wanna say she's asking for fifteen percent, I'm very tickled with that. Let's, I make a motion that we give her fifteen percent.
So, but before we go... Let's make a motion with dollars.
A second.
No, I think we have to make a motion first to agree that we're not gonna put this bus route back on...
Well, she doesn't have the personnel.
She doesn't have the personnel, so we have to make that...
Well, I don't see why, that's a discussion at all.
To her to stop the hiring process, whatever she does. I think we need to make that motion first, that we are not gonna have this bus for the rest of the year.
And then we start a draft.
I think that needs to be done first.
I think when we don't give her the money for it, it's gonna be much, make that statement, right?
But... So would somebody with a calculator do fifteen percent of that forty-two and tell me, so I can make a motion? If you don't like it, you can...
Bob, can you tell me if that amount agrees to the contract? I know you had that.
So the forty-two is, is a full one-seventh of the contract. I did, I mean, one-eleven, because we have one bus.
Forty-two, three, four, eight, oh, one. That's the cost per bus.
Fifteen percent of that would be six thousand, three hundred, fifty-two dollars and twenty cents.
So I make a motion that we, uh, waived six thousand, three hundred and fifty-two dollars, which is approximately fifteen percent. So we would pay her that amount, fifteen percent, which is six thousand, three hundred and fifty-two dollars.
Second.
Yep. Any discussion on that?
I think, I would like to see twenty-five. I mean, you got fixed costs, I don't know what they are, we, I wish we, I, we caught it when she was here, so we could ask her what her fixed cost was, because, I mean, she has to pay for a bus. I know she leases some buses, and six thousand dollars doesn't cover that lease. I don't know.
I think this is what she's asking. By, by my reading of it, this is what she's asking.
Why would she ask something that would be less money than what Nottingham was, when she referenced Nottingham? That makes no sense. What she was asking was that she wanted eighty-five percent, and we'd take fifteen.
I don't know. I, I just know that I would've preferred personally that she found somebody, paid a little more, found somebody, and we had the bus. That, that would've been the preference. I am concerned, uh, Ms. Young mentioned somewhere along the line in this discussion two weeks ago about discipline issues, and we certainly have those in the school right now, which is a big concern of mine. I don't know whether it's bus and the length of time on a bus or not, but it certainly was brought up, so...
I mean, the, the bus ride's for, I know, at least bus six is, is quite long, it's like fifty, fifty minutes.
So, I, you know, I, my preference is that we had the bus.
Yeah, I totally agree.
We budgeted for the money, we budgeted everything, you know, we did our job. For whatever reason, she didn't find the person, so that's not our problem.
Just clarify this, um, this motion, and, and tell me if I've got this wrong. So, what we will be doing is, um, reducing our future payments, either in lump sum or, or spread across by, by an amount of thirty-five-thousand-nine-nine-five-eighty-one, which is the forty-two minus the six thousand.
That's correct. And, and to be very honest with you, I would personally like to see us instruct Dr. Gudomski and Marjorie Whitmore that they work this out the easiest way for Ms. DeLisandro. Whatever is best for her, that's what I think we should do. It's not that we don't have the money, so we do. So whatever is the best way to handle her issue and not take it all at once, like she was talking, that's what I think we should do, is, is, you know, have a little heart. There's, there's some money there, but she wanted to spread it out in a certain way, and as far as I'm concerned, the SAU, and she can work that out to her advantage, and I'm just tickled, pink, pink about it, so...
Are you adding that to your motion?
I did, yes.
It's a heck of a motion.
Totally. I was taking on pages.
Would you allow?
So, so the motion is that...
[laughing]
You have the numbers, right?
Sleeping again?
Not to take it all, all at once.
Exactly.
That the SAU work it out with it?
Yeah.
That the, that the...
The financial...
Spread out the...
Yeah, the financial money's worked out with the SAU.
Are you okay with that?
So, I have her letter here, the other part of it, that, not necessarily, but she's written it in this letter. It doesn't pertain to this year, but she also says when or if the kindergarten bus is also eliminated, this is also the amount I am asking for as an adjustment to help offset my fixed operating costs and to keep my new bus replacement plan on schedule.
Well...
But that's for...
I'm not personally willing to discuss that at this moment. That's pie in the sky.
It's not a done deal yet, so why...
No, so...
And that's just, the motion is just for the remainder of this year?
That's correct.
Right.
Because we've already, we've already had a number of credits, so we'll take the credit, minus it from the thirty-two thousand, and then we'll...
Okay, we can do that. I just don't care. We can do that, I just don't care.
We can do that.
I'm, I'm sure that you guys can figure out the best way to help her, which is fine with me.
Any other discussion on this? Any vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Opposed? Vote carries four-one. Next up is our board self, school board self-evaluation policy, BA. Again, you guys will have to, maybe, tell me what you had in mind for this, because I'm not here. Can you put it on the agenda?
We had it on the last agenda.
Mm-hmm.
And we, um, Scott put it back in there just for us to review, so that, um, what the policy was.
They emailed us...
He emailed us two policies, or forms.
Like a month ago. I mean, not from last week, but a long time ago.
It was a while ago, I don't know if it was a month ago.
Oh, yeah, I, I had to go hunting for it.
If I remember correctly, this isn't in for review, this is in because this is your policy. The board has a self-evaluation and goal-setting policy, so we put, put it in for your attention.
And if we're going to do this, either we have to do it now or in our next meeting, right? Because then we have a turn, possible turnover after that. So, if we wanna do this evaluation, which we should, yeah, he did send us a form. Okay, yeah. Um, so I'll put it out to...
He did?
I don't have a copy of the goals we put together to the board.
Which version?
That may be part of the problem. Um, I was looking around, I couldn't find my copy of, of what we, where we ended up with.
I have a copy of some version, I'll have to look and see.
So maybe what we could do is bring, maybe email those out to people, get what, what our final version of those goals were, and then evaluate ourselves on those goals at our next meeting.
Do we wanna bring the form filled out to the meeting?
Well, let's see, there's different forms, right? Because there's the, the forms that are in the policies that Scott sent us.
Two forms.
Right.
So which one do we fill out?
Both.
Oh, okay.
You fill out one.
There, see, there's my answer.
Alright. Gotta do the other one.
So let's do that. Let's put it on our agenda for next meeting. Let's have everybody fill out the forms, to the best of their ability.
Yeah, that's the, that's the biggest part right there, 'cause I, we never really finished our goals.
Right.
So, I mean, I, I would just probably take this as a buzzer, uh, other than, because...
It's evaluation, you know what, and that, that may be the very first thing you wanna put on our self-evaluation.
We did not finish our goals.
We gotta do the goals. This is something certainly to keep in mind in, in, at the end of March.
Yes.
So, alright, so we will do the evaluation next meeting then, on the second. Alright? Work for everybody?
Sure.
Bring, bring them all in, filled out. And, or you could send out those goals, at least whatever form they're in, so we can maybe just review them. That'd be great. I'm sure I could find them somewhere, but... Okay, any parking lot items?
Um, excuse me, could I ask a question?
Yeah, sure.
Is that the only evaluation we're gonna talk about tonight?
No. We have a non-public session scheduled for non-CBA board feedback, evaluations. You, did you have something in mind?
I think the joint board is fully expecting a Northwood compiled evaluation of, of the superintendent on Monday night. Is that Monday night or the next Monday night?
Monday night.
The twenty-seventh, though.
Twenty-seventh, right.
Twenty, will you?
I thought you guys moved...
You're the person in charge of it. You wanted to do it.
How should we do that? You guys wanna do that in non-public tonight, then? So we could have...
Because we observed that as President State.
I don't see how you can do it tonight.
We don't even have the form.
I've got copies of the form.
I read that, totally.
Because the schools are...
You what? I've got copies of the form.
You're running it.
How many?
One for everybody.
Yeah, just take a look.
And all of your, all of your policies are online as well, so if, if you need any of the templates, whether it's for the superintendent evaluation, which is under the joint board, or the BA evaluation for the Northwood Board, that's under the Northwood section. Ready to go, right?
I did, thank you.
Yeah, we missed our last joint board meeting. It was canceled. Well, how would the board like to go forward with this, then?
We did these.
What?
I thought we did these, though.
We did last year. Well, I remember my first joint board meeting, guys went over it.
That's the new one that was approved, to what, June or something? I forget when.
Yeah, it was adjusted a couple of times.
Yeah.
Does each board turn in one of these?
What we are supposed to do is each of us turn in one of those to our chair. He or she is supposed to compile, compile them, um, and, uh, make an average of, of whatever, and then turn that in, um, to the joint board on Monday, and that, uh, at some point then, we would have a meeting, a joint board meeting with Dr. Gudomski in this particular case, and go over his review with him. And I think the consensus was that the joint board felt, if you go back to last year, but it's since you've been on the board, that the board existing should have the discussion with Dr. Gudomski prior to election. Some boards, I think Nottingham is three on...
Is that...
Is three up for elections in Nottingham?
Yes.
So the board could change quite a lot, and it's really not fair to ask a new person coming in to evaluate someone that they haven't had any experience with. So that's as far as the evaluation, and assuming Dr. Gudomski wants to stay on, he will have contract negotiations after the election, probably.
Let's just say Thursday. Would people like to fill out the forms, and we could have a special meeting to compile them? Maybe on Saturday?
Depending on time Saturday, I have two basket, three basketball games I have to be at.
You just want us to fill this out and email it to you?
That's another...
For compilation?
We could do that, too?
I mean, if you're gonna have a meaningful meeting, um, meeting sometime that we could each explain our positions and stuff, then I'm, I'm all for it. I don't care what it is. Um, but it seemed like the easiest for most of us would be to meet an hour prior to the joint board meeting. Where we're all going there anyway. I don't know how the rest of you feel, but that would be a way of doing it.
Oh, wait, the joint...
If we're just gonna have a two-minute meeting, then I'm not gonna come.
The joint board meeting's not on Monday. It's a week from Monday.
It says the twentieth.
So then we have time.
It says twentieth on the...
It's Monday, do I have it wrong?
It says, it says coming Monday.
Yeah, I, I thought it was.
Yeah.
So it was meeting at five fifteen? Or five o'clock? On Monday? Why is it in...
It's the twentieth.
Okay.
I mean, that meeting has to be in non-public, just amongst five of us, and have a discussion.
I had, I have the wrong date on the joint board meeting, my apologies, my calendar was off.
I had it on the twenty-seventh, too, but, 'cause I read that email totally wrong. But it is the twentieth.
It's gonna be changed at some point?
Yeah, President State is the twentieth, but the school doesn't observe it until Monday
Monday.
Right.
Of the twenty-seventh. So I thought it was the opposite, because it doesn't make any sense why they could do that, but that's what they did.
So we could do that? We could meet before, then, on the, on the twentieth? I mean-
I can meet anytime, that's just a suggestion.
And if most people have jobs and want weekends to-
We don't bring us a day off, so.
Because what I, what I know.
As do I, so.
So Monday at five?
At, uh, SAU. Monday at five at the SAU, would that work for?
We're supposed to bring a filled-out evaluation at that point?
Yep.
And the purpose of this meeting will be to compile them into one?
Yes.
Just so I'm clear.
Yes. That work for you, bud? All right, let's get to that, then. My apologies for dropping the ball on that, I didn't realize it was coming up so soon. It's a five o'clock on the twentieth, which is Monday. Since we're supposed to be on our school board timeline, anyway, um, let's take a look at it.
I don't know. I don't write any of it. At least it still has a file, but, give you kids.
Could we add into February superintendent evaluation, please?
Yep.
So we don't-
Yep.
Thank you.